Okay, we will call the meeting to order at 5:31. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag, United States of America, to the republic which it stands, one nation, liberty and justice for all.
Approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Doug, I'll second.
Cynthia, move to Doug's second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposing sign? Motion carries. Approval of minutes from September 27th, 2021. Any?
This is Chris move to approve.
Okay, Chris moves approval. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Cynthia seconds. Need discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Citizen comments. Citizens wishing to address the school board are asked to state their name, address, and topic in the chatroom and wait for the chairperson to invite them to speak. Board members will not respond to citizens' comments, but rather refer them to district administration. Each person may speak up to three minutes for that topic, and no individual may speak on the same topic more than once. We do have a tight agenda, so we are sticking to the three-minute timeframe. We're allowing 15 minutes total for city citizen comments as we have a Indigenous people's celebration to get to after this meeting. At this time, is there anyone who is wishing to address the school board?
Amber, this is Eric Ripley. I've been monitoring the chatroom, and our first citizen that'd like to make a comment is Aaron McSparrin.
Okay. Aaron, go ahead. You have three minutes.
Okay. As a healthcare provider for 22 years, someone who's been trained in using masks and actual PPE, I have some experience in what I'm telling you. You might even say more than the group in front of me that, like the kids they're forming policy against, would have touched their masks dozens of times within the span of this meeting, turning the mask from an ineffective barrier to an infection carrier. The idea that you are making these policies without listening to other experts is how we've gotten to this point. There's no data to prove that masks work against transmission of COVID. Any proof that tries to state that masks have a benefit are done with simulations, not in classrooms. They are done on mannequins, using a single cough with an ideal seal and using particles of unknown sizes. A 3% gap in a mask makes it 100% ineffective, and 9% gaps are expected. Even N95 masks are ineffective at preventing aerosols, stopping illness or disease. Studies done in schools use masks as one of the mitigation measures. They did not show that masks had any positive effect. They did show that masks are not, that children are not infecting teachers, and that there were increased cases when children were wearing masks. They have studied harms of masks on children, and beside the obvious impacts on learning, communication, and interaction, they have found a 333% increase in intentional self-harm claim. Doses, not to mention the substance abuse disorders. Anxiety increased 94% and depression by 84%. That's not even mentioning the increased upper respiratory tract infections. They talk about this stress as leaving neuroepigenetic scars that are difficult to cure in young people and often escalate into mental behavior problems and a weakened immune system. But what about quarantining? We can all agree that it is not good for kids to be quarantined. So why are we excluding healthy students from in-person learning in the first place? We should do as the Florida DOH has done. Let parents decide whether their healthy child should be taken out of school after an exposure to COVID. Parents have the right to have their healthy kids in school. We know that schools are not super-spreaders. There is not a single valid study that shows any child has ever benefited from forced quarantine policies. But we do know that they cause significant harm to kids. Data says that 98% of kids that quarantined never became symptomatic. That means we are forcing kids to quarantine for the 2% chance that they will get sick. It just makes common sense to follow a symptom-based approach regarding quarantine student, quarantining students. In reality, your policies are what is hurting children. You are responsible for the suicide attempts, the depression, self-harm, and isolation. It's your policies under the guise of protecting them that are to blame for why our children are hurting. You don't have to do it this way. You can put into place a symptom-based approach and stop pretending you have the power to make medical decisions for other people's children. You are unnecessarily taking on medical liability when you are supposed to be focused on teaching children.
Thank you, Ms. McSparrin.
Okay, the next citizen is Elizabeth Delgado.
Okay, Elizabeth, you're good to go for three minutes.
Sorry, I'm not quite sure how to do these things. I'm just calling, I'm just submitting to you my opinions regarding the Convention on the Rights of the Child, which I'm sure you guys are very familiar with. And as I've reviewed this, I found that the school board's mask mandate is in violation of many, many points of this convention. It violates number two, which is regarding to discrimination in that the mandate is discriminated against a child's religious rights, freedoms, and even some disabilities, as well as in other ways. They promote children being treated unfairly as well. It violates number six, which is life, survival, and development in that development is being hindered because children have difficulty hearing and understanding others with masks on. The mandate violates a child's psychological well-being also. Number eight, which is identity, is violated by mask mandates in that masks being worn rob children of their identity and individuality. Number 12, respect for children's views is violated in that many children have come right out and said the masks are uncomfortable, they make it hard to breathe, et cetera. But schools are not listening to them, and they are the ones you guys are supposed to be supporting and defending. But your children's voice isn't caught being listened to. Number 13, which is sharing thoughts freely, is violated by school staff telling students they have to stay quiet about the masks, not to express any opinions that talk about the negative sides regarding the masks, et cetera. Numbers 14, which is freedom of thought and religion, and 23, which is children with disabilities. The violations have been so blatant that there's really no explanation needed on these. Difficulty breathing, nausea, dizziness, and other effects of mask-wearing negatively impact their environment. So number 24, which is health, water, food, and environment, is also clearly violated. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Delgado. Are there other citizen comments, Eric?
Vice President, plain no. At this time, there are no other citizens requesting to speak in the chatroom.
Okay. Thank you. We will move on to superintendent's recommendations for discussion, review of school board meeting norms. Cynthia, would you mind reading those, please?
You caught me because I have to be on computers for the everything, so sorry. Be prepared, be on time, value and respect each other, exercise thoughtful deliberation and conversation, be professional at the board table, and when visiting with the general public, speak up when the norms are not being followed, advocate on behalf of students, and keep the community in mind. And then governance lead by policy, serve as advocates, entrust the day-to-day operations to the professionals, and assist community members and stakeholders in following the chain of command. That's it.
Thank you. We will now move on to item B, Fall Enrollment Report. Dr. Brenner?
Thank you, and I will defer to Dr. Lewis for that report.
Good evening, everyone. You will see in our board meeting packet, it has the memo that shares about the fall enrollment report. So you'll see in the first table, it compares our last day of school for the 2021 school year to our September 30th of this year enrollment. And then table two shows our enrollment from a year ago, September 30th, 2020, until now. And then our table three compares the demographic report projections to where we are now. So as you can see, specifically on table one, you can see those gains and the number of students that we gained or gained back, depending from the spring of 2021 to the fall of 2021. So you'll see our growth there of 132 students. Then you'll see in table two, our change from last year to this year, which is just nine students lower. And then table three, you'll see we're 119 students lower than the demographics. But I wasn't here at the time, and I assume that that was all pre-COVID. So I think just as most school districts in the nation, our demographers didn't plan in there for the reductions in our student enrollment due to COVID. So that would be my overview of potentially why we overall prediction on where we would be. Ms. Glatch, anything that I missed there?
Did a fantastic job, Dr. Lewis.
Any questions on the Fall Enrollment Report? Okay, moving on to NDSBA resolutions, I will send that one to Dr. Brenner.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On page seven of your electronic packet, there's a memo from me regarding the NDSBA resolutions. And I believe at this time, Mr. Carpenter is the lone board member who will be representing the board at the delegate assembly. So all you have to do is go to the subsequent page on page eight, and you'll see the resolutions one, two, and three. And all the district would ask you to do at this time, school board members, is to recommend to Mr. Carpenter how you would like him to vote on those resolutions, or you can leave it up to him.
So it appears that there are three resolutions that are four years old and scheduled to be drawn. First one being regional education associations, taxing authority of the state, which is opposing any attempt to limit taxing, and taxing authority of school boards opposing any attempts to further limit or eliminate, eliminate the tax of school. Any opposition to that? Doug, I'm hearing to what the recommendation is from the committee. Okay. Moving on, we are on the Finance Committee report.
I guess that's me. We met as a finance committee on September 30th to discuss various items, which included an update on the Career Impact Academy, you know, where things were at at that point in time. So it was just, it was a brief update. They're still in progress of raising money and proposal, which will ultimately be coming to the board. The first meeting in November for us to review, and then with the second meeting in November for us to take formal action on that proposal. So I know there was encouraging news in the paper the other day, you know, with contributions that are coming in from the non-governmental entity side of things. So hopefully that continues. Not maybe quite such a good from the, from the public side with the county, but hopefully they will be able to find some money to help out with this project. Then we also talked about the special election and the positive result of that, and did some early discussion, you know, what that $2.5 million means. Should it be something that we maintain for yearly use? Or should we bond for some of it to give us more dollars upfront for crucial projects that need to be done? So at this point in time, based on all the discussion we had on that, it really ultimately is one part of the recommendation that was for us to have that meeting on October 19th, joint meeting of finance and facilities. Because then we also discussed budget reductions, and they're really all kind of interrelated and going to be project things, processes that will have to take place kind of at the same time as we undergo them. And, and we felt we needed to have full discussion of, of all the board members as far as facilities. It's, you know, what is the next steps? How should we utilize the $2.5 million? And look at getting some thoughts and guidance on that, as well as the whole budget reduction. And what will be or should be that target? And what would be the process that we will use to go through to, to deal with ultimately whatever reduction that, that people are comfortable and feel that we need to, to, to do for this coming, upcoming budget year? So there will be that meeting on the joint finance and facilities. Facilities consists of all members of the board, so everybody should be in attendance at that. Subsequently, did meet with Dr. Lewis and talked a little bit more about that process. She alluded to a process that was previously used at the Rochester School District for a determination of a guiding change document. And so that will also be a focus of discussion at that joint meeting that we'll be having. That is an appropriate way of going about. It sounded like it was a very successful, very detailed, little bit maybe time-consuming, but a process that worked very well for the Rochester School Board. So I think it would be important for us to hear that conversation, and then that may be a direction that we would want to go for both the facilities conversation and the budget conversation. So that would be my report. Any questions?
I have one.
Yep.
And that would be about the bonding. So the minute site bonding up to 1.5 million, is that a conversation that we'll have then at that joint meeting on the 19th?
That would be part, would be part of the conversation, yes.
Thank you.
I would say with that, too, Scott did a good job of providing all sorts of options. So, you know, we've, we've been afforded the opportunity to have that mill levy raised, and what are we going to do with those dollars moving forward? But we also did talk about the importance of public perception and communication. And whatever we decide as a committee, how can we outwardly communicate to the public who helped pass the mill levy increase on, what are we using those dollars for? How are they being spent? And so we definitely felt that it was important to engage the board in those future-looking conversations to identify all options and then pick the best route that we felt was, was that moving forward. Any other questions for Doug? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to the superintendent's recommendations for action, the consent agenda. Do I have a motion for approval?
I'll go ahead and make that motion to approve the consent agenda.
Okay, motion by Cynthia. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Just seconds. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next is the canvassing returns on the question submitted at the September 28th, 2021 special election.
Thank you, Vice President. Page 15 of the board packet is memorandum with a variety of documents following. So I'll just kind of walk through it here piece by piece. The election day vote totals are attached and included in the packet. Valid absentee ballots and verified set-aside ballots received prior to the start of this meeting today, which is coincides with 13 days after the election, are to be included in the final votes. The vote totals on the resolution document will be finalized at the meeting today. So, yes, in effect, this afternoon, I went to the county office, and there were six absentee ballots that were received by Grand Forks County after the date of the election. However, those ballots were postmarked the day, the day before the election or earlier, so they are valid votes. And there was one valid set-aside ballot. And what that is, is on election day, there was an individual that did not bring identification with, to the Alara Center when voting. That person was allowed to vote, but had to verify, you know, verify, you know, identification at a later point in time, which, which in fact that person did. So, so there were six absentee ballots and one verified set-aside ballot in addition to the totals that we have in the packet. So I'll just kind of walk through what's, what's in the packet here. The business manager's election certificate, the business manager's certificate as the posting of the notice of election and sample ballot, and then a document for approving the resolution canvassing returns. So on page 16 is the business manager's election certificate. Yes, all of those items pertaining to century code, et cetera, are, you know, I've signed and have verified that, that we have done those items as appropriate. You know, the next page, page 17 is an affidavit of publication that's required to be done for the two weeks leading up to the election. So we posted that in, within the Grand Forks Herald as appropriate. The following page, 18, is the certificate as the posting of the notice of election and sample ballot. The page 19 is the notice of special election, which the board approved. That would have been at the, towards the end of July, on July 26th. Page 20 is a copy of the actual official ballot that was either sent out in absentee format or by all of the individuals that voted in person at the Alara Center. That's a copy of that official ballot. Page 21 is the vote totals from election day. And so there were 3,618 election individuals that voted on election day. 572 absentee ballots were validated by election judges on that day for a total of 4,190. And below, you can see the number of yes votes, the number of no votes. Undetermined, most of those were, or actually, I think all of those were individuals that voted that did not have identification. And one of those individuals showed up to verify identification later within the proper timeframe. And there was actually one blank ballot that was not filled out. So again, today, I picked up six absentee ballots from the county that were valid. Two of those were voted, voted yes, four vote no. The one verified set-aside voted yes. So the totals that you see on page 21 of your packet will change to, yes, would be 2,0762, no, 1,430. And the, you know, the undetermined would drop by one as one was, was validated, and then blank stayed the same. So the, the yes percentage changed from 65.85% to 65.81% with the additional seven votes. And so the, page 22 is the resolution canvassing returns. And that's where now with, with the absentee ballots in, in hand, I will fill in the totals of 2,0762, yes, 1,0430, no. And I would request, you know, board approving that resolution. And then after the fact, or after that, I'll, the president's signature and my signature. And then that's, that would conclude the, you know, the election, all the election work from September 28th. Any questions I can answer?
I probably should have done this, but remind us how many voted the first time in the first election, when we had the two?
Yeah, Cynthia, I don't have that total right in front of me. Pull it up on a spreadsheet. I think it was roughly about 1,000 more votes in June. But I apologize, I don't have that number right in front of me.
That's all right. I just thought of it as you were talking about this, so I hadn't thought of it before. But roughly 1,000 more is good to know.
Oh, and actually, actually, I can pull up the spreadsheet in front of me here right now. Let's see here. Actually, a total was actually 5,388, so I was mistaken. Well, no, that is, yep, that is a little over 1,000 more. Yep, I was, I was accurate in that statement.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Scott on the canvassing report? Okay, so you just need a motion for approval, Scott, of those results?
Actually, going back to the memorandum, page on, on page 15, actually, I need administrative recommendation for items one, two, and three for approval of the election certificate. Separately, the certificate of posting of notice of election, and then the resolution canvassing returns. Actually, each, each of those three items, I would need approval.
Do they need to be done separately?
Nope, they should, they should be able to be combined without any issue.
I, I move, we accept the recommendations for one, two, and three on page 15.
Okay, Chris moved approval.
I'll second. This is Doug.
Okay, second by Doug. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
I believe Cynthia, you're up with the policy review. And we did confirm that if you so choose during your report, we can approve them in chunks under the bolded sections. As you go through, if no one has any questions or wants to pull any out, we can approve them all in chunks.
Yes, I'm prepared for that. So thank you, Amber. I appreciate that. So let's bear with us all as we go through this huge amount. But so the first, the first chunk then I would propose would be to approve the first reading of the, of these new policies as written. But I am going to list them all so that we are clear on what we are doing here. But so I'll list them, and then I'll ask for a motion to approve all of these. So what we're looking at approving is ABAC virtual learning because of weather, ABAC. I think I'll just read the topics rather than these policy letters. The video cameras on school buses, the board superintendent relations, board member visits to schools, staff dress code, weapons prohibition on district property for employees, youth patriotic society access, release time for outside instruction, GED credit for high school graduation and curriculum requirements, and teaching about religion and weapons prohibition on school property for the public. So I'd move that we would accept these as for the first reading. Is there a second? But you, you're supposed to say that, I think.
I'll second it.
Okay, so we have a Okay, so we have a motion on that. Amber, do you want me to just do these? Maybe so.
I think Amber is frozen at the moment. Go ahead, Cynthia.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second to approve one through 11 of those that I just read. Is there, all in favor, say aye? Aye?
Aye.
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 All opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Keep in mind, we were there for two and a half hours. Okay, next, next block. This one is to approve the first reading.
Yep.
Am I good to go?
I believe she's still frozen, at least on my screen.
Okay. The next block is to approve the first reading of the following, of the, of the new policies that will, will replace designated existing policies as written and amended. And I am going to ask to pull the restraint or seclusion policy because I've had a few comments today based on that, that I didn't get a chance to get back to the district on. And so the ones I'm going to read will be one through six. And I guess I'll take prerogative as board, as the, the chair of the policy committee to just pull the restraint or seclusion policy. So that would mean membership and associations, board member development, new member orientation, board staff relations, retiring board members, board communication with the public. Those are the six that we would be approving that will replace designated existing policies. I'd make a motion to approve all of those. Is there a second?
This is Jeff. I'll second.
I think I should ask for any discussion. But Amber, do you want to take it, the motions?
Sure. So we have a motion from Cynthia and a second from Jeff. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Do you want to discuss the number seven? Or is that going back to the committee?
Well, let me just, I, I think I should go back to the committee because there are very specific questions about some of the language, for example, parents versus the term guardian and, and, and parents. I can't.
I think that's fine. Yeah, if you want to just take that back to the committee, then we can just move on to that next section.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. So then the next section is to approve the first reading of the following policies that, that have been amended. And there are quite a number of those, right? I want to make sure that I know, are there more than 10? Let me just make, there are 13. So I'd make a motion to approve these and they are the book, the section 504 of the Rehabilitation Act of 1973, bullying policy, school board committees, meetings of the board, board meeting agenda and pre-meeting preparation, board meeting procedures, compensation and expenses for board members, maintaining professional employee-student boundaries, open enrollment, concussion management, carrying weapons, student publications and freedom of expression, and patron complaints. And I would just say that some of these we had, you know, done just as recently as last year. And then there are changes that were recommended. So I made a motion to approve that block.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion on those items? Doug seconded.
I, I would also like to say a lot of these are related to board, you know, board policies and procedures that, that we want to make sure we follow.
Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Okay, the next block is to approve the one reading and adoption of the following existing board regulations as amended. And they are the board member internet and social media use policy. And the scope and membership of school board committees. I mean, these are pretty minor changes to these. I'd make a motion to approve those.
Is there a second? Who is that? Bill?
Bill, yep.
Okay. So we have a motion by Cynthia, a second by Bill. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Next block is to reject the following policies. These are optional or recommended by the North Dakota School Board Association, policy templates. And after review, we agreed that they weren't necessary for our school district. For various reasons. Some of them is because, you know, if you look, some of them are covered in teacher negotiated agreements. So you can kind of read, Cindy did a really nice job of outlining these policies. So they are, I'd make a motion to approve the consultants to the board, citizens advisory committees, insurance for board members, candidate orientation, family and medical leave act, family and medical leave act regulations, unpaid leave and teacher preparation time.
We have a motion for approval. Is there a second?
This is Chris. I'll second.
Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Oh, you guys are really quick. I never thought we'd get through this. Okay, the last group is rescinding existing policies which are covered in other newer amended policies. Policy 8102 goals for board service and policy 8615 methods of operation. I'd make a motion to approve those two, to rescind, to rescind those policies.
This is Doug. I'll second.
Okay, motion by Cynthia. Doug seconded. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Okay, that's it for items under superintendent's recommendations for action. We'll now move on to other announcements, Indigenous Peoples' Day event.
We are absolutely thrilled and hoping that everyone can join us for the Indigenous Peoples' Day event starting in 20 minutes or whenever the city council committee of the whole adjourns. They are doing what we are doing tonight and trying to skinny their agenda as well. So we're very excited. It's from 6:30 to 8:00. Many exciting things on the agenda, including artwork by our very own students through the Mentor Center. And Eric just placed the link if you cannot make it. It's also being streamed live through Facebook.
Thank you. Dr. Lewis, do you know if that's like an outside celebration to begin with? Is it inside?
It is.
Okay. Board requests for future considerations. Okay, hearing none. Cynthia, how did we do with school board norms?
Well, I don't think you can get much better than this. We should be on Zoom more often. No, just kidding.
Okay, well, we are adjourned. We'll see many of you at the Indigenous Peoples' Day celebration.